Good morning, everybody. I'd like to remind everyone, please make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery is not here. Councilman Beck.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we come before you today just to say thank you, Lord God. We thank you for life, health, and strength. And Father God, as we begin this meeting, we pray and thank you for your wisdom. We thank you for your knowledge. We thank you for understanding. And Father God, we continue to lift our merit before you. We continue to lift our city council before you and those who work for our city and live within our city, Lord God. We are grateful and thankful, God, for the things that you have done, for the things that you are doing, Lord God, and the things that you are going to do, God. So we give you praise, we give you honor, God, and we give you glory, God. And I thank you, God, that you have blessed me to see another birthday, Lord God. Thank you for the things that you're doing, and we thank you that we have your faith, God, to call those things that we're not as though they were. Pray this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meeting held on September 16th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 12th through the 18th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations. Mayor Ford, we have any this morning?
No.
All right. Do want to recognize that today is Councilwoman Latham's birthday. So in keeping up with our new tradition, we'd like to sing happy birthday to you this morning, and we're going to toast you with cupcakes. I have an orange cupcake. You have a yellow. I'm for Auburn, so.
I have one with an orange cupcake, too.
All right. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Councilwoman Latham. Happy birthday to you. All right. Yay. Happy birthday.
No way.
All right. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to recess the council meeting in order to conduct the work session.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor for the recess, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to recess the council meeting.
All right. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to reconvene the council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to reconvene the council meeting, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to reconvene.
All right. We're in item 10 in our agenda. It's unfinished business. We have none today. Item 11 is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to Forest Cemetery Board. This appoints Ruth Moffett and Juanita Martin and reappoints Kyle Chambers for terms expiring April 5th, 2029. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to say thank you for these individuals' willingness to serve. We have such a hard time getting people to serve on committees and boards in this community, so thank you for being willing to step up and do that.
Mr. President, just to give a plug, Michael, I forgot the name of it. Back in Time, a walk-through time, it's coming back up in October.
That's right.
So we're going to start plugging that. That's a big fundraiser for the Forest Cemetery Board.
Yes, very well.
President Beck was actually, has been a part of that since the original things that they talk about happened.
Yeah. I'm a white butler.
I heard you were.
Yeah.
You got puddin'.
Yeah. Puddin' wrote my script, and I do it exactly the way that it's written.
You're kidding. You better.
All right. Michael, when is that? I got your email. It's October the...
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay. October 19th, walk-through time. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution authorizing special use permit to Verizon Wireless. This is for modification of their equipment at the existing wireless telecommunications facility located at 1007 Goodyear Avenue. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? I see David out there enters in the audience. Thank you for coming here while we're discussing this. Anybody have any questions for David about this? All right, David, thanks for being here. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Koa Hills Consulting, LLC. This is to assist the city with the Tyler EERP Human Resources Management software implementation, and the amount is $100,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Anybody have any questions? I know we discussed this earlier in our meeting. Brandon, could you, that's not going to be televised, could you do a quick recap on that? Because we had a discussion last week that was public. This may tie it back together since it's going to overlap two budget years.
Yes, sir. So on the funding side, we just have some funding that's going to be available, FY25 from our Tyler that kind of left over, if you will. So we're going to tie that up and roll that forward to FY26, so that's the difference in the budget and the contract amount. Furthermore, you know, this is just an assistance, like a project manager, almost like an extra employee, as I like to call it on hours, that they bring in for Koa Hills. They bring in their staff to help us with the implementation. It worked out fantastic for finance. It would have been a big struggle for us had we not had Koa Hills, so knowing that information, carrying it forward. This is essentially phase two of three phases: finance, this will be HRM, Human Resources Management, and then our revenue collections. And it's just a, as Mayor Ford said, it's a tedious process. It's a little bit time-consuming, but it's something you do once every 30 years. So our process took a little over 14 months. This will be about 11 months, and then you'll have the revenue section that'll finish things out, that will put the entire city on Tyler. And we didn't mention this earlier, but to further elaborate, we already have our police and court system that are operating on a Tyler product as well, so that gets us all under one umbrella.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? I just want to say thanks for your work in doing that, and thanks, Mayor Ford, for the leadership in that. That brings, it really tightens our shoestring, so to speak. I mean, it makes us more efficient as a city. Information can come out quicker to citizens and to the mayor when he's managing the city, and it's a very wise move. Glad to see us doing that. All right. Anybody else? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Etowah County Commission. This is to house and maintain city warrants at an annual cost of $121,204.61. The term is for three years. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, just to clarify for the general public, this was requested by the Police Department as a way for us to manage our database of warrants and other matters pertaining to the law enforcement operations that are going to be affected by our move to the new 911 center. So as our 911 dispatchers, dispatch responsibilities get transferred over to the Etowah County 911 Administration, this kind of was a gap in responsibility, so this agreement will fill that gap and make sure that we're maintaining all of our warrants and other documentation pertaining to that law enforcement operations legally and up to code.
All right. Thank you for that. Mayor Ford, congratulations.
We just want to thank the Chair from the Etowah County Commission for working with us, this cooperation once again, so thank you.
It's nice to see that continue. There's always something going, you and Tina, doing a great job working with our county commission. Anybody else? All right. If not, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Item 15 is new business. We have a few items this morning. You want to start with this Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, President Beck. This is legal, from the Legal Department, 2025, 1227, requested by the Engineering Department, document resolution authorizing acquisition of property for Murray Drive area drainage projects. I'm asking my colleagues to suspend the rules for immediate consideration.
Second. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. I think Councilman Wilson has a couple.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Thank you. This next one comes to us from the Engineering Department. My colleague, Councilman Avery, is absent today, but this is in his district, actually. This is granting an easement to Alabama Power Company as part of the AgroCola Drainage Project, Phase One. This will just allow Alabama Power an easement onto city property to help, I believe, with the relocating of some utility lines as part of that drainage project. So obviously, this being one of the many, many drainage improvement projects we have going around the city, there's no reason to hold it up. So if there's no objection from my colleagues, I'd ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, the next one I have is a fun one. This is authorizing an agreement with Chambly's King Architects, LLC, for $476,548. This is part of the new tennis center that will be located at the Gaston Sports Park. As many of you know, you've probably seen the demolition start on the West Megan Sports Complex, which is where our previous tennis center was. That's making way for the new Gaston Athletics Center there. And even before we had the final designs and drawings done on that project, we had already been working with Gaston State to expand our partnership with them at the Gaston Sports Park. They had demolished their tennis courts, the complex they had there, directly adjacent to the Gaston Sports Park. So this will actually be a brand-new, state-of-the-art tennis center there with a championship court that will just add to this incredible Gaston Sports Park that began in the previous administration and has been carried on by the new administration. So it's been such an honor to be on the previous council and who started this process and to see it continue to grow. So if there's no objections, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business because Chambly's King Architects has actually already started on the work and the design for this project.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, can I say something about that?
Yes, Mayor Ford.
So the tennis courts, just reminding everyone, that is a 50/50 split between us and Gaston State Community College and Chancellor Baker, who's a very good friend. This came due to fruition, doing a visit with Heath and John Moore, and David Hooks and I went to Montgomery. He's willing to pay 50% of the price through post-secondary and the budget. We're paying 50%. Then also, the 5K track that's going on down there will be another partnership with Gaston State, and then they will generate a new male and female 5K team for two-year schools. So this is just great cooperation with them, with us.
Really is. Thank you. Appreciate your work there for doing that. All right. That's all for new business. We'll go to item 16, department reports, committees and boards. Any of those this morning?
Brandon.
Brandon?
I'm going to just elaborate a little bit, follow up on Heath. Talked about our trip, first and foremost. Again, thank you, Council, for allowing us that opportunity. I know Heath thought from the architectural side, I'll give you a little insight on the finance side. So as he said, we had a great few meetings there in New York. Our meeting with Moody's, super impressive. We had a great presentation prepared, and I know you guys have seen the items, the projects in our RISE plan. So the way that kind of worked out, Heath and them got to show the projects and show those impressive slides and pictures of what we're going to do, but it sure did make it easier on me to follow up with some impressive numbers, and that's how I geared it toward them. I said, "This is all great and wonderful. Looks great." But from the finance side, a few takeaways from me. Heath had already said, Stiefel was just very impressed. They elaborated on how well we presented ourselves, especially for a city our size. One thing, there are several things in here, I don't even know them all, but one thing that I took away, a little bullet point that kind of clicked, he said, "You guys, in this rating, in this process, your management score will be off the charts," I believe is what he said. And he said, "This display, what all you did here." So I know there's several factors in that a lot that I don't even know, but when he said that, it was like a blip. I put a bullet point there on my paper. Mentioned the new software. I took that opportunity because they said part of their thing is, you know, you've got all these projects coming in here, you're going to be able to manage this. They, that we, you know, I mentioned that coming off a green screen. I told them we were on a green screen, told them we're going into Tyler. They knew what that was and able to help us manage these projects. That was another blip there. But one of the most impressive things, all of the numbers were there, all the questions were answered. There were no, you know, negative, they understood that. They had looked at our budget, looked at our audits, everything, you know, in place, what we're doing here. But John Moore said across the table, we had gone through quite a bit, and he looked down and he said, "I have a question." He said, "What could we do different?" He said, "After looking at us, what could we do different?" There was a long pause, long quiet, and they could not give us that. They said, "The things that you are doing, the timing, the things that are in place, the way you're funding these things," and that's just the honest truth. They looked and said, you know, "You have the things in place, it's just time to implement this and see these things to fruition." So I thought, Mayor, when John looked down and said that, and I'm sitting there with my pen even, you know, it's like, "What do we need to do different?" They really didn't give us anything. So again, I just wanted to update you guys. I know Heath already told you, it was a fantastic trip. Stayed very, very busy, meetings and go grab a bite and back to meetings, and I think we just represented the City of Gaston very well, so thank y'all.
Wonderful. Thank you for that report. Outstanding. Any other reports? Mayor Ford, from, got Ruth, all right?
Well, good morning. Once again, I'm a little bit hoarse today. Councilman Smith certainly did preach an outstanding message yesterday, last night, and it left me hoarse. I was screaming. It was good.
Oh, wow.
But that's not what I'm up here for. I'm up here, you will in the future see Mark Golden up here, but he was not able to come today. And so, as you know, our EMA has transitioned over to Etowah County. Huge congratulations to Mr. Jim Slick, who is now the new EMA Director over that. But the mayor here in Gaston wanted to make sure that we implemented something not to replace EMA, but to work in conjunction with EMA, which is GERT, Gaston Emergency Response Team. And the whole idea behind GERT is that those immediate needs, that, you know, in the time of disaster, we are our own first responders. So making sure that, the mayor wanted to make sure he kind of had his pulse on that. So if there are immediate needs, as disaster doesn't just happen in one little isolated spot, oftentimes, it's a pathway of disaster. So just making sure that he had his hand and his pulse on that. So with that, we have an, we may potentially have some rain, some storms on Wednesday and Thursday, so really just making everyone aware of that rain chance. It looks like, from the National Weather Service, it looks like probably on Wednesday, just a 45% chance, but on Thursday, an 80% chance. So there may be isolated storms that'll come through, so just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that and prepared for that. Seems like less of a threat on Wednesday and more of a threat on Thursday. But as we know, weather has its own mind, so we can try to project, we can try to prepare, but it's very important to be informed. And so with that, I would just say that we need to make sure that we have multiple ways to get alerts. James Spann always says, you know, "Don't hang our hats on those sirens outside." Those sirens outside are meant for people who are on the golf course or doing something outside. If you are in your home, you need to have a weather radio. Use your TV, use your cell phone, whatever means that you use to get information, make sure you keep your eyes on that information. As well, have access to shelters, and then check for updates as we see things progressing throughout the day. Again, not a huge expectation, but just making everyone aware of the possibility. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that information. Mayor Ford, but I know Heath did an elaborate job during the work session describing his point of view. Would it be okay if he did that again?
Absolutely.
I'd love for it to be on the taped version, but would you mind doing that, Heath?
Heath, make sure you brag on me, please.
Yeah.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
Yeah, so very happy again to represent the City of Gaston and certainly you folks as we went on our New York bond trip. Felt like it was very fruitful, accomplished the mission at hand, the task at hand. As I jokingly said before, certainly an engineering whirlwind from bridges to just density, infrastructure, et cetera, that was awesome from a personal perspective. But like Brandon had mentioned a minute ago, there really wasn't a lot of time. It was kind of as we were walking, I got to look and take in what I could. But as far as the presentation itself, so walked away, just very proud of this team, to be able to be a part of the team. So we were able to present the full project and the overall presentation, not just of the projects, but really the City of Gaston, where we are, what we were doing. Big component of that, from my perspective, even before I went into the projects with everyone, with the rest of the team, was the Grow Gaston Plan. And just to be able to lay out what we had done, what Mayor Ford initially immediately put in place, first time since 1974. Now we've got a citywide plan. Entire city is excited as we move forward, be able to list these projects out, go into detail on what they are, and then really show the energy and what's already been done plus what's planned as we lay these things out and get them into place. A couple of the things that stood out to me, one, just the overall quality of the presentation. We were told not amongst ourselves patting each other on the back. This was from outsiders coming in saying, "The quality of the presentation that you just put forth is what we normally see from much larger cities." And so they go through tons of these through a year, just different analyzers and the whole process through the Moody's, which I had never seen, so I was being educated as I was going through it. But just it was above, way above average of what they normally see, certainly from a city our size. So we were excited to bring that and felt like we represented the city and you guys well. Other than that, the main takeaway for me was the senior analyst for Moody's backed up, and it was actually about that time, what Brandon had mentioned, of what else can we do? We always want to progress. Never rest on your laurels, you can always move forward. So in that mindset, just kind of looking as he's taking it back and said, "You know, when we go through this analysis process for the City of Gaston and go through this exercise with the committees that we'll meet with after this, they don't see the City of Gaston as an old city, which we are, and we're proud of that. They see, but because of your growth, your financials, really everything that you've done to lead up to this point and what you're projecting out, we're analyzing you as a new, developing city." And so that was phenomenal. We were really excited to see that, and we believe that's what we're doing with you guys, really, to reimagine Gaston and putting rubber to the road and putting it into action. So just overall, great trip. Like I said, I think, mission accomplished. We'll see whether we get immediate fruit, or I have no doubt we'll have fruit going down the road, but again, just excited to be part of that process, and I think it was good.
Well, thank you. Did a great job. Thank you for restating that again. All right, well, we'll now go to, is that all the department reports?
Yes.
We'll go to remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor Ford, welcome back from your trip.
Thank you, Mr. President, counsel. I want to just piggyback, I'll go ahead and start with that, whatever Heath was saying. But y'all, I couldn't be more proud to be a citizen of Gaston, Alabama, than I was up there in front of that group, and I mean that sincerely. We treated it as a military briefing. We took it and we developed a briefing, and we practiced as a group. The first time didn't go as well. Second time went a lot better. Third time went really good. So we presented to Moody's, and we represented Gaston well, and I'm very proud of that fact. We went through each slide. I'll tell you a funny story, and I was going through each slide and assigning to who would talk. And I got to the end, and I told John, I said, "Morris, I don't have a slide," so, which was kind of funny. And we left it that way, and we got up there, and the whole point was, is that, man, have we not put together a team? This isn't about Craig, it's about the team that's representing the City of Gaston. And I'm going to say names, and hopefully I don't leave anybody out. Tina, Ruth, John, Nick, Heath, Brandon, David Hooks, and did I leave anybody else out? Tina. But we went around the room. Everybody had something to say that was in their lane. It went excellent, and then when Moody's asked questions in the end, I addressed those questions. There's no doubt in my mind that we're making good use of tax dollars, improving quality of life. They told us we were long overdue to come to New York, to ask for another bond rating. They said they hadn't seen us in a while, so that was encouraging. We did ask them at the end, what could we do better? They ranked us up there with the cities of Atlanta, Memphis, Knoxville, Nashville, Birmingham with our presentation. They did say the leadership, which is not, I have a little bit to do with it, but it was all the employees that we took and presented that. When we landed, we hit the ground running, and we didn't stop. It took me two days to recover, I'll be honest with you, and a couple of us, not me, so it's okay, Bishop, have COVID. So, you know, we're okay, but it also...
Happy birthday, Bishop.
Yeah. I said, "Not me, not me." Ocho. But it did make me also realize this, for the council to know that Stiefel, or Stiefel, I can't ever pronounce her name right, we have chosen the right, there's a lot of good companies, but they are the right company. Ken Fundabert, David Corn and them represented us well. Ken pushed them hard, which was interesting to see. And then Ken walked away, and we all said, did everybody recognize the statement that he said? We're no longer an old city, we're a growing city, similar to Greenville, South Carolina. So if you've never been to Greenville, South Carolina, I encourage you to do so. That's where my uncle used to coach football up there in Clemson. And we, John Moore and I, had been to a game there last year with my cousins, and it's a phenomenal city. And to be able to rank in that category is just phenomenal. I can't say enough about the staff and the job that they did. So they made us proud. Lastly, I want to thank the council, to the council. This would not have happened without y'all. You know, one question they asked was, were there any dissenting votes? No, it was unanimous. Is there anyone that doesn't like the plan? No, it was all unanimous. So that went into our leadership score. That is 30% of your score. So we maxed out our score in that area, so that was important to know. Also, they were very important, it was very important that we had the Grow Master Plan. To the people, thank you. The Grow Master Plan was a playbook, and we told them this was not our plan, this wasn't Craig Ford's plan, that we just pulled out and this is something we want to do. This was the people's plan, and this is something the projects that they wanted. They were excited, Councilwoman Minatra, about the Ritz Theater, the project that you wanted included in your district. I thought that was fantastic, and they asked a lot of questions about that area and the money that we're putting in that through the bonds, so we were impressed with that. So that's pretty much it on the trip, but I wanted to tell you, it was just an eye-opening experience, and I've done this before in the legislature, but never with a team like this that we had. Never experienced the gratification that we've received in this. I want to mention also, there's a free dumpster day Saturday from 7:00 to noon, the same areas, West Meagan Sports Complex, East Gadsden Community Center, and the parking lot across from the amp. Now, I want to say this, every time we have one, I get calls, I didn't know about it. When's the next one? So we have them about every three to four months. This is the next one, so please don't miss it, and the employees do an excellent job in public works. We're having District Two Community Chat, it says for ages 18 to 33. So I'm sure we wouldn't turn anybody away, but we're wanting to get an idea on temperature of the youth, is that right, Councilman Smith? And this will be Thursday, September 25th, at 5:30 at New Destiny Church. Everybody should know where that is, if they don't, you need to go to church and hear Pastor Smith. So we're looking forward to that community meeting. We want to thank Sergeant Unlu and Lieutenant Russell. If you haven't seen the Facebook videos, it was just taken out of the blue for what they did with a little child at a church. I'm not sure all the particulars, but man, you know, we've got some great police officers. Want to say that, the paving crew is still in Council District Two. Want to thank Councilwoman Minatra, we rode around Walnut Park, Alabama City area, knocking on doors, looking at the streets that need to be paving. She lobbing me and twisting my arm to get a few more streets wanting to be paved in that area, so Councilwoman, thank you for that. We look forward to moving the paving crew in that area next. Thank you.
Great, great report, Mayor Ford. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Latham, my birthday lady.
Thank you, President Beck. I noticed how he fashioned his remarks, mentioning COVID. First, let me say thank you for the birthday wishes and blessings. I am appreciative and grateful, thank you. Second, I would like to thank the team for their representation in New York, and we look forward to just actually, it's very exciting just to see the demolition that's going on on Meagan, West Meagan. So we're excited about not only that, but so many things that are going on in Gadsden. So thank you again for your representation and the excitement that you have coming from that trip. I also want to just say thank you to the mayor and to Mr. Williams for the progress on Murray Drive. And we just ask those constituents, as we've seen drainage projects in District One, it does take time, it is a process, but we just ask you to just try to remain patient with us. We try to, thank you Heath, for taking calls and having meetings with those constituents, not just on Murray Drive, but throughout our district, just to let them know that they aren't forgotten. Some of these people have been dealing with drainage issues for years, and so we thank you for that, and just want to encourage the people who live on Murray Drive to remain patient, and it will happen. And those others that are throughout the district as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy birthday, Councilwoman Latham. Pray to God bless you and many more. I want to thank Mr. Williams and Mr. Brandon, and also Ms. Moffett. I enjoy getting those, the response and the feedback from what's going on, so I'm loving this new format that we've gone to. I want to thank you, Mayor Ford, for making that change in our meetings. We talked a lot about being ADA compliant earlier, but I do want to brag on our paving crew a little bit as well, because we see so much heavy going on, and so many roads are being repaired, and it just looks good, it definitely feels good, and I know our constituents really appreciate seeing all of this going on in our community, so I'm glad that crews are now in District Two. Hopefully we'll have some more updates about all of this going on up there as well. One of our constituents in the back made me aware of a pothole on Meagan, and of course, I went out there and looked at it, took pictures of it, wasn't aware of it. I love the Hay Gadsden app, really, you get a chance to upload things, it goes directly, it gets routed to the department it needs to get to, give you a status about what's going on with it, and also let you know when it was completed. I'm sure you know it's fixed, right? So I know you're excited about that. But sometimes we don't hear good news, and this wasn't that long ago, to get a complaint about a pothole in one of our streets and come back a month or two later, it's already taken care of. Those are the things we're trying to do, as Councilwoman Latham says, sometimes it takes time, but as Mayor Ford put out earlier, one of the benefits of having our paving crew is give us more of a choice, say so about what roads, speed and timing, which a lot of these roads can be taken care of. So that is what we're trying to do, continue to be patient with us. I know there's still more yet to come for our city, I'm excited about it. Thank you, Mayor Ford, for your leadership, thanks to the council, also Ms. Moffett, I'm going to call her Minister Ruth this time, I called her Ms. Moffett at first. Had a great time with her and her pastor in the church last night, just good friends of ours for a long time, had just a Holy Ghost good time down there. Thank y'all for the invite. That looks like Councilman Cannon, is that you? Okay, yeah, good to see you, Councilman, as well, hadn't seen you in a while. We knew each other before politics, so we met in church, but always good to see you, as well as Mr. Harris, with our former councilmen, come back and visit. So that's all I have, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith, Councilman Wilson.
I'm sorry, one other thing, don't forget about Thursday, please, don't forget about Thursday. The meeting, we changed the name, it's called a community, what you call it, Mayor Ford? Community chat? We're going to call it a community chat, so 18 to 33, come on out and chat with us on Thursday at 5:30. Thank you, didn't want to forget about that.
Good luck. Councilman Wilson?
Yep. Also hello to my former colleague, former Councilman Johnny Cannon, good to see you. I guess, last time I saw you was ringing the bell at the Salvation Army over there, I think, it's the last time we ran into each other. I just want to say good morning again to everybody except for the officiating crew of the Auburn, Oklahoma gang. I hope that you guys are being duly punished. Also want to say congratulations and happy retirement to Bruce Pearl, the Auburn basketball coach, although he says otherwise, I believe he was likely to be a candidate for the U.S. Senate seat that will soon be vacated here in Alabama, so who knows, maybe we'll have an Auburn coach as a governor and an Auburn coach as a senator at the same time. And on somewhat of a somber note, I don't know, this, actually, this news just, when someone says on a somber note, that's when he... This news just broke about an hour ago, so some of y'all may not be aware of this, but I want to send my condolences to the family of Rudy Johnson, the former running back at Auburn. About an hour ago, it was announced that Rudy passed away at the age of 45 years old. He had been struggling with some mental health issues for quite some time, it's believed to be a result of his traumatic brain injury, the CTE injuries that he suffered as an NFL player, and so my thoughts and prayers are with him, and if anybody is out there struggling with mental health or suicidal thoughts, there are resources out there, you can reach out and get help. Check on your family members who are struggling with mental health, because that's a terrible, a terrible way to go. And the last thing I'll say is, on a serious note, I know we've seen a lot in the news recently about the death of Charlie Kirk, and not just with that awful instance, but, you know, just several months ago, we had an instance in Minnesota where several elected officials were murdered in their homes and assaulted in their homes. We've seen more and more instances of this recently, with mayors and elected officials being assaulted in various ways. And I'll be honest with you, going all the way back to, I'll tell y'all a story, when I was on the previous council, I had a constituent of mine, a citizen of this town, come behind this diocese and tell me straight to my face, I've got a pistol in my pocket and it's pointed at you, right here, standing right here. That really happened. A person actually thought that that was an appropriate thing to say. And, you know, I've been really disgruntled, to be honest with you, over the last two or three years about being elected official. I didn't really think it was worth it, because you come in here and you put yourself out there and you try to do the right thing. Of course, we don't always do the right thing. I get it wrong a lot, but to have somebody for seven years who just won't take their finger off of you, that just stays on you every day, like you're not a human being, okay? Here's what I'm going to say, and especially what bothers me is when they expect to be listened to when they talk, and they don't ever stick around to listen to you talk, and they always run their mouth while you're talking. I'm done with it, is what I'm telling you. I watched a show last night where Senator Manchin, who may be running for president, he was talking about how it's almost impossible to get qualified people to run for office these days, because nobody wants to mess with it, nobody wants to be treated this way. And Senator Manchin said, it's a small price to pay for this great country that we have. And I'm telling you, nothing has ever reinvigorated me more than that statement, and he's 100% right. I don't like it when people talk ugly about me, I don't like it when people spread lies about me, I don't like it when people disrespect me and don't give me the respect that I have earned in this community. But it's a small price to pay for what you just saw in this meeting today, the good stuff that's happening in this city, the good stuff that's happening in this area. So my fuse is relit, I am more engaged in this process than I've ever been, and I'll tell you right now, bring it on, because you better know what you're talking about, because if you don't, I'm going to embarrass you like a small child. That's all I have to say, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Keep your mouth shut, Mr. Phil.
Let me handle this, let me handle this. Kindly refrain from speaking out in the audience. It's your last time. If I say it again, I'm going to ask you to be removed from henceforth. Don't mistake my kindness for weakness. Councilwoman Minatra?
Well, Councilwoman Wilson is a very hard act to follow, so I just brought a visual aid. Yesterday was a great day on Wall Street. In 2029, the Ritz Theater will celebrate 100 years. And you can only imagine that we have quite a few things that need fixing. So yesterday, a great company called Night Sign Industries, and they're out of Tuscaloosa, they came and worked on the 96 or 7-year-old Ritz Theater sign for eight hours solid without taking a break, to basically take that sign down, which weighed almost 7,000 pounds, and took 300,000 watts of power to light it up. And we are going to have a new sign in just a few weeks that weighs only 1,500 pounds with LED lights that are probably going to cause the Alabama Power Company to reevaluate what they have been charging us to light that sign for all of our performances. So I just want to thank that company for all their hard work and the fact that we are making progress on Wall Street, and I thank the mayor for that. Thank you.
Excellent. Good news, glad to hear that. Councilwoman Robinson?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to talk about this past weekend, just in Gadsden, I had the privilege to play in a golf tournament with Councilman Wilson and a couple of other folks for the library on Friday, and that golf course, I'll just go in and brag on it, there's people out there working on that golf course, that thing looks amazing. I'm not a huge golfer, I play about five, six times a year, try to lose, not lose too many, but that's my goal, is to put six or seven golf balls in my bag and not lose them before we get done, but I'm doing pretty good here lately. But that golf course looks amazing, those new bunkers, looks very professional, I mean, just, it's unbelievable how that course looks, I just want to brag on that. Also, on Saturday and Sunday, it was Art on the Rocks, and we had the Wine Festival on Saturday afternoon at the Falls. That place was packed out, there were lines, and every little venue, every little tent for the wine sampling and everything, and everybody had a great time. I talked to so many people that were not from Gadsden, that were from Huntsville and Decatur and Birmingham and Trussville, and some people have never been to the Oklahoma Falls before, and it was just unreal hearing them, as you stood in line and waited to get up to the wine tasting, just talking to these people, and them never coming here before, never seen it before, and how beautiful it is. Just very professionally done, congratulations to Gadsden Tourism and the Falls staff for putting on that professional event. And they had the VIP Wine Dinner afterwards. I went up there and I kind of worked that for a lot, I caught it volunteering, but I went up there and kind of sat around and made sure, just kind of next to some other volunteers, and we did a couple of things, but we did, I did get to witness that, but that was unbelievable, how nice that was. And they had a firework show afterwards, it went off with no hitch, like the one me and you put on a couple, about a year ago. But, I mean, it didn't go bad, but, you know, this one was a little cleaner. But, yeah, a lot going on in the city of Gadsden, and I just want to brag on those two places. And city of Gadsden, congratulations to the team going to New York and making it happen, man. I mean, this town is under construction. I was telling somebody the other day, when you see a town that's under construction, when you see cranes everywhere, and you see dirt being moved, and you see old buildings being tearing down, and old signs coming down, and new stuff going up, we are a moving city, a growing city. You think like a big city, you think like a grown city, you are a grown city. So congratulations to everybody, council, mayor, mayor's staff, I appreciate it, I'm looking forward to the future.
Great job. Thank you, Councilman Robinson. I do want to wish Councilwoman Latham a happy birthday and many more, and Mayor Ford, congratulations on the New York City trip and all the city employees that went, your reports were great, and thank you for representing our city in a very professional way. Couldn't agree more with what's been set up here. Gadsden is on the move, we are reimagining our city in a really positive way, so many good things are happening, it's just a pleasure to be a part of it, and appreciate your leadership, Mayor Ford. Things are really happening. Anytime I go out of town, NLC trips or Alabama League trips, we're part of the conversation. People know about Gadsden, they're asking questions, how are you doing this, or tell me about your new projects. It's just real refreshing to have people come up to you to ask that, as opposed to you having to go to them to try to find out how to do some things. So very exciting to be a part of the, in the city of Gadsden, right now, a lot of paving going on, and there are cranes all over the place, this is a sign of progress, and so I think the best is yet to come. Appreciate all the planning and appreciate all the hard work that everybody puts into it, because we're only as good as the people that are doing the work, and we've got some outstanding city employees, and Brandon and Heath and Tina and John, Lee, Michael Rogers, I know public relations, you guys have a lot to do, Garrett and the folks in that office from the presentation, I'm sure, so thank y'all for what you did. Nick Hall, thank you, my twin over there, thank you for all you do, and your 34 or so years of working for this city, thank you. That's a lifetime. We've had a good day of government, as my friend, Councilman Smith, often says, so we appreciate you folks being here, and we'll be back next Tuesday. Everybody have a great week, be weather aware.